Sure. Happy to do so, and I think, given the agenda, I believe we want to start with the operating budget. And just a couple of quick items that I have before we get into recommendations that board members want to make. The library ancillary line, which ends in 200. There was some concern about that, and I'm not, I can't tell from the ABC minutes why the initial proposal came forward. But initially, there was an ABC recommendation of $66,686 for the ancillary expenses line. Previous budget, the actual was $47,894. Last year, you approved $53. I went through this with Joanne Clancy. The library trustees were concerned that the $44,620 was too low. It's actually lower than two years prior. Joanne ran the numbers for me and recommended that we use a figure of $48,000 as opposed to the $44 or the $66. I'm not sure what the board's feeling about that is, but that was her best recommendation as to what the actual would like to be.
Because it's my understanding from Denise that it's down, that it's down because certain employees took the buyout instead of having health insurance.
That was my, that was my thought at first as well, but actually, our new librarian took the buyout much as Ruth had done.
Okay.
So exactly as we've looked at, so there's very little difference there, and that's why we got the one in the London numbers for us. My recommendation.
Good. Thank you.
The other, if I had anything else, you had emailed me questions about health insurance buyout numbers earlier, Scott. And looking at that, right now, we've got $13,335 budgeting for health insurance buyout. And the actual we've spent to date is $11,244. So there may be a tiny bit of wiggle room there, but I think that's pretty close. And in regard to whether we've got an extra plan or two in the health insurance budget line, the numbers that I gave to Joanne to incorporate into Tyler and the spreadsheet were based on our actual renewal for employees. So I don't believe there is any extra in there. I know it looked in years past as if maybe the former town administrator had from time to time carried an extra position there.
Okay.
Thanks.
So we're making decisions at this time, like putting in $48? Because I'm going to be doing this at the same time as.
Sure. That's what you think it is. Do you have some consensus?
Yeah, that's what we need to do.
We have some consensus?
Yep. At this point, I guess I would look to board members who are there.
I have a question about police. You had mentioned something about helping out with the price of the police cruiser. I still see the full new equipment expenditure here, so just do she.
They got the numbers from Joanne over the weekend, so I can pay for the full server cost. And we can reduce that new equipment line item by $25,000.
Okay. Thanks.
That wasn't the question she asked.
Yeah. The new equipment line can reduce by $25,000, which is the police cruiser.
Right.
Great.
But you said server.
Right, but also the server was a discussion.
Oh, okay.
And I can also pay for the server.
He's just taking money off left and right here.
So, I mean, they could very well be, depending on how many details our offices work, between now and the time we get the cruiser, there may be enough to pay for the cruiser in full, but I don't want to gamble that much.
So we're taking $25,000?
Off of new equipment.
Off of the line?
Correct.
And I already reduced the computer line by the $7,500 based on his comments, choose comments for last meeting, which brought that number to $12,780.
Thank you. So it's $21, I guess.
I found $25,000, what you got?
I want to have more, but I need to have the town administrator clear up this particular page that covers the capital reserve fund. Yes, I've got three things that you need to tweak. It says in 2022 approved, it says $100,000 was put into library capital reserve fund. That did not happen, that's not something that should have happened. That number should be zero.
Okay, this is from the library building capital reserve fund?
Yep. There's no money, there's no money put in there.
So what do you think?
I checked the MS 636 because Mr. Tappan had commented on this as well to me earlier, and it shows $100,000 raised and appropriated.
But that's, that is for the, in terms of monies going into there, there should be no monies going into.
Raised and appropriated means raised?
Yes, ma'am.
It should be the maintenance, that's where the money came out of, so.
Or on being moved from, and which is also incorrect, means.
Yeah, it should be library building, it shouldn't be maintenance. And the other thing down in town buildings for 2022, the amount that was put in there was $104,500, not just $100,000.
It was, yeah, there was $100,000 in one warrant article and then $4,500 for it.
Yep, so those need to be changed.
The grant isn't a part of the expenses, though. The grant was hidden through us, no?
Yes, but it was in the last fiscal year, it was deducted and assigned fund balance, we have to put it back in.
I can certainly let Joanne know that we need to include these in us.
Yep. The other thing is, I had an email to you about the line, the last line. And the assistant town administrator and I went back and forth, and I guess we decided to disagree. But those numbers give the impression that the select board is proposing like nothing into the fire building, and that's not true. So I think those numbers need to be changed from zeros to whatever.
Well, we're doing that tonight, but that's.
I assume, yeah, when we get ready, stations and two mayors certainly put that out immediately.
Excuse me, Ms. President Speaker, did you want to speak?
Okay, this is going to be a little hard to hear you guys.
Okay, we'll try to make way to the microphone.
If you keep your faces closer to the mic, I don't know what you're talking about.
Let's get our faces right up next to.
I just heard library, and I wasn't sure what you're, exactly what you were talking about.
Thanks for letting us know.
Okay.
I still don't know what exactly you were talking about.
Did we figure this?
Yeah, I think the primary thing we were discussing is that, and I'm still confused by the wording of the warrant article that says to raise and appropriate $100,000 to be deposited into the library building capital reserve fund. But what Ms. Buggie had pointed out was that money had actually come apparently from the other capital reserve fund and was moved there.
That was my understanding.
So what does raise and appropriate mean? Doesn't raise mean taxes?
It says the source of the funds should be the.
I will say that the MS 636 that was filed with the DRA shows $100,000 being moved into that capital reserve fund, the library building capital reserve fund for the 2022 fiscal year.
I have the article right here.
Yeah, what does that article say?
It says to save the town, raise and appropriate the sum not to exceed $100,000 to be used for the renovation in addition to the Lee Public Library building and to authorize the withdrawal of this amount from the library capital reserve fund.
Ah, okay, there it is. So that's where.
So they're. Those are being deposited in that fund, though.
Well, no, it's in the wrong fund. You got the names wrong to begin with, okay? That's, that's the problem. And I think we'll get some clarification from the chairperson of the trustees of the trust fund.
I'm not sure when that 636 form is filled out, but the numbers that are shown in your list are the amounts on the checks. When I first went to pick up the checks, there was a check for $100,000 to go to the library capital reserve fund. In error. There was also the $4,500 check was missing. Those were later corrected. The $100,000 check, of course, was returned in forty. And so that may be the explanation that when the checks were first cut, it was those amounts, but that was not correct.
Okay, that makes.
And when I go with a checklist, which I write from the, from the official ballot results, I check off each check, and I have the right number of checks, but the wrong things on them.
That makes more sense because the forms we filed with the state.
So also, let's change the description, because this is coming from Tyler, so Tyler needs to be fixed.
Right, we're going to remove maintenance from 49161-000-09, and that will be just the library capital reserve fund.
Its name is the library building.
Which is the library, no, the library capital reserve fund. The other one is the Lee library building capital reserve fund.
So that money needs to be changed as well.
Need to add Lee, leave that one and remove maintenance.
And lastly, to add the $4,500 to the town building fund.
All right.
So what does that mean for a fiscal year '22 approved total? Is it $4,565?
We need to back out $100,000 and add $4,500. So what is it for five?
$4,59500.
He's got it.
Yes, John did send me calculations over here today.
And we currently have in those funds, before we change anything, it's $644,000 in warrant articles right now. It's thirty for the library. Is that right?
That's what it is.
All right.
That's why I've been asking Denise as to the numbers that we're trying to talk about.
So I had that if we got down to a 4.8% just budget, not warrant articles, we'd have to cut $219,568 tonight from what we've already cut. Have the same number basically that you have?
No, but.
Okay. And then we have to cut from the warrant articles.
Oh, you're breaking them down?
Yeah, well, I'm breaking them down just because it's so much information and they affect each other differently. So when you vote, you're going to vote for the budget. We have the default budget and the new budget. So my goal is to make that number 4.8 or less difference. So that means $218,000 have to be cut. And then on top of that, we have the issue with the warrant articles. So do you want to start with budget or warrant articles?
Well, I think Mr. Brown started with operating budget, but.
I think we should, because warrant articles can be affected after this, but the budget has to be done tonight.
And actually, I don't believe you can affect the warrant articles after this. There's some belief that you can take until the 24th, but the NHMA advice that I got today said that you should have everything finalized by the 18th.
Let's start with budget and then go down to our warrant. Do you want to? You go first.
I have, what I would like to do, my apologies to the fair committee, but after doing some research, what I'd like to propose is the town fair get reduced to zero, and they use some of the monies that they have in their revolving fund or expense fund. So they accept with the trustees. And then they fundraise for whatever they can, and that's what the fireworks are. Then we're using no tax money, and then they can control how much fireworks they have or how much they don't.
Great. Everyone agree?
I don't know if the fair queen, I don't know if she's the queen or the princess.
There's actually several people in this room in the committee. The fair committee met the other day, and they said that they understood, they'd be appreciative of anything that the select board could cut on the operating budget for them just to help to reduce the burden.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Those two, you think?
Well, that's what you say.
I'm looking at your list, and you have. Well, I have one that's a bigger impact than any of yours.
Good, go for it.
So I would.
I didn't get a final word on the fireworks?
Oh, so reduce the parks and recs?
Yes, yes.
The town fair parks and recs to zero?
From $4,000. Is that one of the ones we want to leave it at a dollar? Probably not, but.
Zero dollars.
I leave it at zero, because based on what I just said, they're going to pay for it, so. The other one I'd like to propose is we got additional revenue this year from rooms and meals, over $100,000. What I'd like to.
I'm sorry? $103,000.
Yes.
Yeah, well, I'm not proposing $103,000 because that's a odd number. I'd like to propose that we use the $100,000 and pay for one of our particular warrant articles. So instead of taking it out of taxation, take it out of that particular undersigned fund balance, because that's where it's going to dump into at the end of June, so. So I don't know if we want to wait till we get there, but.
I'm okay with uneven numbers because we have, well, we have an uneven number to cut.
So I'd like, at least for now.
Just took $3,000 from fireworks, I have to take the $3,000 back.
You can get it back later. So I've proposed number five, the source of funds not be taxation, but in terms of the undersigned fund balance.
Yeah, I know. I would agree.
Yeah, very.
So is that warrant article number five?
That's warrant article number five.
Is that now our?
So what we just proposed and agreed upon is changing the source of funds from taxation to undersigned fund balance.
Okay.
So that, we reduce expenses by that particular amount, basically.
Thank you.
Basically, the expense is still there, but the revenue will increase by $100,000.
Do you want to talk to warrant articles?
No, I kind of didn't.
Okay, I see that. See what's happening here.
Go ahead.
Mr. Brown, do you have, do you have any suggestions on cuts you want to?
No.
Okay. One of the options, which I hate to do, but one of the possible things we could do for a small amount is we could take a further $10,000 off of paving. $200, make it $190. Uh, it's on page.
Yep. What page is this? Do you want to go from $200, $290?
Yeah, I mean, it's 10, but it's something we gotta do everything we can. I also would suggest that for women's aid, they did mention that this year they had a huge influx of income money. I absolutely want to support that every time going forward, but maybe we could cut that to $1,000, about $2,000 right now? Just because they're not struggling as much as possibly.
So that was a $1,000 reduction?
Yeah. And make sure we consider next year their $2,000 request. And I wasn't sure why ready rides went up so much, because did that make sense to everyone else? From $750 to $1,800. We've reached $750.
Yeah, previous year was $500, it's been $5000 for a while. I don't know why last year they went down, oh, probably because of the pandemic.
Right.
They went even more. So then they're back to, and of course, everything goes down, cashing in and stuff like that. Anything else on your list?
I have warrant article seven.
All right.
Do you want to stand about it? Yeah, that's why I'm trying to not bring it up right now. Oh, you see something?
For the EOC budget, I actually proposed $4,000 for the supply line, and it got put in there, it's $5,600. And then I see the select board put it to $3,600. Be careful, you're fine with $2,000 if you want to do that.
Thank you, yeah. So now it's maybe $2,000.
It seems $2,000.
On the planning and zoning legal line item, I had requested $25,000. You guys bumped it down to 10, and then I spoke last week, we could split the difference and up maybe $5,000. If you could just make a decision on that, that'd be great, please.
Oh, yeah. That did not get back up toward the end, I mean, that's the wrong direction.
Unfortunately, thank you.
If the other board members are leaving, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to leave it at 10, and if you need more, come back to us.
Sure, as long, yep.
My constituency is for things like that, so.
Yep. That's a great idea.
As long as I can do that, that'd be great.
There's so many witnesses.
Any of the, any of the, so, you know, if you come, if we're, if we're taking something off and you have this, oh, my goodness moment, just come to us and say, hey, you know, this is not something my budget for. I need to do whatever it is, the service or buy whatever it happens to be. Because we have access to those particular funds, and if we don't use them, they go back into undersigned fund balance. But if we need to use them, we need to use them.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a subtotal right now where we're at for our budget?
We're at $4,904,532 for operating budget, down from $4,917,133.
What's the second number after the $4,000? Seven, was the number after that?
I have a different number.
Yeah.
Did you capture the $100,000, Andy?
I did not take that out of the operating budget.
That's not operating, that's not, yeah.
I had a reduction of $4,000 for the fair committee, I had a reduction of $10,000 for paving, I had a reduction of $1,000 for lemonade, and a reduction of $1,600 for the EOC budget. Which took me from, as I said, the total of $4,917,133 to $4,904,533.
Oh, you didn't do the new equipment for breach?
Yeah, that's 25.
That's 21, that's 22.
I was thinking about my budget in the police, and I already taken that out.
Great. So I am showing that the 4.8% increase would be $4,793,916.
That's your 7% increase.
So that means I still have a little ways to go.
She's here for number 13. She's here for number 13. I'm sorry. She's here for number 13. Oh, okay.
Okay, so $4,800,000, so, yeah, $100,000. All right, where are we going to find $100,000?
Already got you $104.
I know, I'm proud of you, I got you, I got you more, too. So.
I think you're at the same place that I was, because to get any further, you may have to start funding people or services, I think, so.
So are we, is, I mean, literally, every time the line is budget, we've all got $3,000, I don't. I'm down to like, can we make water bottles cheaper? I mean, this is ridiculous. So do we now move to? And I will say this, one of the things I think our town spends a lot of money on is electricity.
Yes.
I think that a goal going forward absolutely needs to increase that through making better choices with our buildings, through alternative energy, and that's definitely a goal of mine going forward next year.
Well, it's also that, what is it called again, Andy? That community power buying.
Yep, house sales money.
Yep, so that's something to be explored as well. So, I don't remember what the average reduction was, but there was a significant reduction, so.
There was, and I have not got the final quote back from them. We did get the hydro power option from First Start Power, which is a fraction of a cent on the kilowatt hour, but he was going to give me what that would be in total based on our usage.
There's lots of fun, heated conversations to come, and hopefully, we'll get people excited to come to Energy Committee, because this is a big budget.
Andy, could you just do a short explanation so people, because we understand what that is, but maybe they don't, just a short explanation.
Or should we do that when we have?
Sure, I can, I can give a just a brief overview. There's new legislation in New Hampshire that allows communities to basically be aggregators for electric energy. We've talked with an outfit, which has about three different names, based in Auburn, New Hampshire, that has worked with a number of other towns, including the town that I live in, Deerfield, for the last three years. One of the things they offer in addition to a lower power rate to the municipality is they allow any residents that want to buy into that lower rate to participate as well. And in addition to potential savings and a little bit of return on what you're spending based on your kilowatt usage, they also give you the option to pick where you want your power to come from. They have hydroelectric option, they have green option, they have traditional option. And if you choose to opt into that, you're under no obligation to stay. You can leave at any time, it's based on a 30-day billing cycle. But that's essentially what we're looking at. And the advantages are twofold, one, that you actually save a little bit of money, and two, that you get to select where your power is generated from. And I believe they use offset credits, that sort of thing, to compensate for it. They don't actually hook you up directly to the dam or directly to the woodship plant in Pennsylvania, but they make arrangements to offset. And we do have an outline of that proposal on the town website for anyone that's interested in a little more exacting information about it.
So hopefully, that will be something you can probably next year. All right, so should we go to warrant articles? And just so you guys know, if that was talking out there, it's really hard on the recording for Denise to take notes, and it's such a hard job to take notes, so if you have something to say, please feel free to come on up and share with us. All right, warrant articles. Where did you put $100? Yes. Mr. Bell.
So I got a proposal to get your 4.8%, and that's, instead of cutting the $190 from paving, make it 200, let the voters vote on it to see if they want to do it in a warrant article.
And then if they don't, then it is, we don't waive.
Isn't it is?
Yep, that's an option. No, because it'll be, he wanted to make it up, thank you, though, I appreciate that. No, I appreciate that.
The roads need to be paved.
No, no, I agree, I agree. I agree. But, and if they move to the warrant article, if we're looking at it from the grant total, the amount difference, but if you're looking at apples, apples, that doesn't matter. Thank you.
But thank you for the suggestions, Steve.
And thank you for all the ways you've gone through the budget and looked for every little extra bit we can grab. I really, it's been incredible hard work. All right.
So right now, the only thing we have to do with warrant articles is to change the wording on article five to note that $100,000 comes from undersigned fund balance.
Right. I have another one, and that is that if you look at how we're saving for the fire equipment, if we do it more similarly to how the CIP committee did it, where you are changing the amounts going forward, so you start off with a smaller amount, as money, as work more than as money, you know, it gets easier, you add a little bit more. So we could actually put 220 instead of 230, I know it's only 10, but $10,000, same amount at the end, just use up it later.
I'd just like to speak on this, that I don't know where the 230 came from.
Okay.
The CIP plan that I saw was $175,000.
Okay.
And according to those numbers, we were fine with that, so I don't know where the 230 came from.
I think there was FPT, and did you?
Do you want? Then Mr. Tappan wants to speak.
John, you're on.
So the number that's in the FPT right now that it calculates is $228,000. What Katrina's referencing to is, she asked me earlier, could we do a graduated? And so I just put in, if you started at 220, 220, go to 225, then 230, 230 for the rest. And that both meets the planned expenditures and the margins.
And the number that we have.
A question about the difference between the FPT and the CIP. There are four sources of difference. The biggest one is that the CIP has never accounted for future cost increases beyond the first year. So if you look at CIP, a fire truck that you're going to buy next year costs the same as one that you're going to buy 12 or 15 years from now. A police car you're going to. A police car you're going to buy this year costs the same as next year and the next year and the next year and on and on. So that's the very, the biggest difference. The CIP has never done that, has never accounted for future increases in the nominal cost. Where it has counted for the increase, it's only been for the first year, and it has used inflation. But inflation isn't the whole reason that nominal costs go up. There's inflation, there's real cost increase, and particularly with fire trucks, there's quality cost increase. A fire truck you buy today, or the new one you're buying, has much more to it and is much more capable than the twenty-year-old truck being replaced. So when I went back and looked at the cost of fire equipment, over twenty years, we didn't purchase them in exactly twenty years, but over the replacement cycle, they went up by five and seven percent per year, effectively. So that means that in twenty years, they cost four times as much as they do today. And that's just in historical record. The other differences are that the CIP is using a fairly high interest rate, two point four percent. We did briefly get over two point four percent once in the last fourteen years, but in the last fourteen years, we spent nine of that fourteen at less than one percent. That's where we are right now, at point nine. Those are the biggest differences.
But there's no actual change in equipment, it's just how you save for that equipment in the future.
Correct. And you really need to, you really need to count for the future cost increases in the nominal cost. I mean, that's just common experience. There are other sources of change, also, so.
All right. But it is possible that we could save a little more, a little less aggressively right now if we save more aggressively in the future?
Correct, there's two things, that's one. The other thing that you would probably like to do when you have a completed plan, but right now you don't have, is to look at, there are some funds where the amount that you have to set aside is fairly high for just two or three years, and then it drops way down. There are others like the fire equipment, where it stays up there for, I think it's fourteen years, because there's a fire truck way out.
The transportation equipment is that situation as well, right? Where we, right now, we're saying.
So it's, you could look at the entire total of appropriations for all the funds, and where there are some funds that are high and then drop down after just a few years, you could put in the overrides so that in some other funds, you start out lower than you need, and then boost it up when the other ones come down. To really do that intelligently requires another working session with the FPT.
John, I want to interrupt the meeting, if you don't mind. I've been remiss in not recognizing a very, very, very important person who is the recipient of the Boston King. And she's been sitting there, she's been sitting there, listening to all this, and I'm sure it's thrilling for you, I know you have some help. So we want to go ahead and address your issue now, if you don't mind, come on up, speak your piece, and we'll, we'll see what we can do.
Bye, nice folks, I'm too tired for it.
You can come up and stand. Hey Cheryl Gaddis, thirty masterode. Meet at the repo, oldest citizen in the town of LA. We just came to put in our two cents about elderly exemption, and I see that it is on the warrant articles. It's, it's good because all these people, she's been a resident since nineteen fifty-eight, and there's other residents also that it affects, so I wanted to say thank you.
Although I, I just want to say I don't understand what's happening to the seniors in China, or how seniors are going to pay. It's way too much. We are, we're doing fine, and then the reevaluation came, my taxes on my schedule went up double, went double, which meant taxes now, and I was not under their other senior exemption, I was not paying taxes. Then last year, I got my tax bill, and it was zero, almost three thousand dollars. Now that's a shock to me, sister.
Pardon? I said three thousand every six months, yeah.
That was not easy to come up with, so I think we really need to think about the seniors and strong families.
It's in the warrant article, so we just have to get the, the people to vote, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
She'll wait till she gets out to Parkland before she does.
So do we want to go ahead and suggest that we decrease that, the fire, though, what is the number?
Warrant article four.
Warrant article four, thank you. And you're agreeing?
Well, I just wanted to get you know that I didn't know anything about that number.
Okay.
The number that I was presenting was, was a hundred and seventy-five thousand, so to see that and have nobody explain the background to that, I'm kind of like, well, we're trying to cut things, and I didn't propose that number, so. You know, working with Bob the last seven or eight years, I've always given him new numbers every year, so I understand what John's saying, but we do look at the area departments that are purchasing new equipment, and we do update those prices, so something like the recent engine, we weren't using a price that we got twenty years ago. That's all.
And we felt we had saved enough for it, and we had enough money for it, we didn't have to get extra money, so. So is there, can we split the difference? Can we put two hundred? Is that way we haven't put too little?
The financial planning tool calls for two, two twenty-eight, so.
Right, but we also know we can save more later, and we're, the fire chief is saying, Gus, if we're cutting, then, I, I think that's the thing, we have to decide how we're going to go forward with the financial plan.
I'd like to speak as a resident, so a lot of people in this town's taxes went up a lot this year. My assumption, they're just going to vote no, especially if you put forward warrant article with two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. As Mr. Booby has said in the past, the capital improvements plan is just a wish list. Maybe some of these things are going to get, need to get pushed out so our deposits are lower, because if you put in, let's, just as an example, a hundred thousand for this, you've got a better shot at getting it passed than for two hundred and thirty. I know personally, I would go for two thirty, not with the increase, and, so you better opt to get a little bit than to try to go for it all, in my opinion, because if you try to go for too much, you're not getting anything.
Good point.
That sounds like something I said about the operating budget.
You're, I agree.
Because the thing is, okay, I'm going to do the, what is it? This, no, what is it? Why do you keep saying something over and over again?
I don't know.
Oh, okay, so I'm going to say something I said numerous times already, just for the group, that my concern is, we're proposing an operating budget that's so high, people are going to say, heck no, and they're going to vote against it. So then we're going to get the default budget, which includes nothing extra, it was just going to be whatever the one was for the current year, plus the obligatory things we have to pay for. That is my concern, and I think we're treading on very thin ice here in terms of what we're proposing. I think it's way too much. I understand why it got to the position that it's in, but I don't think it's going to pass, I think people are going to say, nope, we're not going to do that.
At least we have a default budget to go to.
Yes, you have a default budget.
Bigger warrant article should get nothing.
Right.
So I don't want to turn into what is Deerfield, like, and they go for the default budget of, very, very often, so.
It's been six years in a row.
I also want to make sure that we're saving for our future, though, which I think one of the things that is, is hard is when we're not thinking about saving for the future, so I, I'm fine with bringing it down, I, I think that's.
Well, I think to get the operating budget down, you're going to have to start cutting people and services.
All right, so are you proposing to put it back to the one seventy-five and we deal with it later? What are you proposing?
In terms of Article number four?
Yes.
Excuse me. John, you have a comment?
Yes. The principal function of the FPT is to provide you, the board, with what is the effect of the changes that you're suggesting. So in the FPT, which calls for two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars a year, I just put in an override of one seventy-five. So what, that then says, okay, what do you need for next year? And it goes from two twenty-eight to two thirty-seven, five.
Right, it goes up quick.
It only went up by nine thousand, three hundred dollars.
Yes, but that's every year going forward after that.
Correct, that goes out for another, I think it's thirteen years.
So that's the, that's the change.
But my point is, that was going all the way down to one seventy-five, and you can make it up in the future years. The, the other things that are significant unknowns here is what are interest rates going to be, and of course, what is, what should that annual increase really be? Right now, we're holding it at five percent. But where you, where, where the expenses are out a decade or more from now.
Right.
A small change now doesn't, doesn't affect so much, doesn't cause a big change in what you need to set aside in the next.
So we're only bringing one seventy-five is a reasonable place to be right now? Is that correct?
It means that you're.
Say it again.
You're saying that next year, it's going to be two thirty-seven.
Right.
Or you're going to change some schedules.
Something else, right.
Or some amounts.
Okay, so we're proposing warrant article number four is for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
Are you making a motion, Katrina?
I am, no, I don't know.
Bring it on in there. There aren't that motions yet.
Yeah.
With John's description, I'm okay with the change, but, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Bell, are you, are you okay with that?
Yes.
And I'd like to suggest on article, warrant article six, where it says we have to appropriate a sum of ninety-four thousand dollars, we can actually make that seventy-eight thousand for eight years, and then drop that to fifty-seven thousand for the next six years, as opposed to right now, which is ninety-four thousand, drop to fifty-five thousand for that ninety, for ninety-four thousand for five years, fifty-five thousand for nine years. So we're spreading it out more, so I think change that from ninety-four to seventy-eight.
So all those numbers are the, from the financial planning tool administrator?
Correct.
Kind of thing, person, okay.
Yes. We have gone into detail with those. Do we agree on that one?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, so what do we got now for warrant article?
Seven, number seven.
Seven. Well, I didn't, I wasn't doing order, oh, yeah, the town, right, seven, yeah. I don't think we've been doing any there, right, John? Number seven is the highway department, road and bridge improvement plan, and right now is the right time to be doing everything we can for highway, for bridges, because money is matched. All right, and then highway equipment, cap letters are fine, I haven't heard anything about being able to change? All right.
Can I? One of the things that this previous board did, instructed the Department of Public Works' manager, I think at the time, now is director, in terms of when he's buying new pieces of equipment like trucks and stuff, he's supposed to buy new, he's not supposed to buy used. So I think, I think this board needs to officially instruct the, the public works director that he's allowed to buy used.
Yes.
God, thank you.
Yay! We need to pay to roll things off of.
So I, hopefully, the other two of you are able to do that change?
Absolutely.
If that's the case, you could probably cut that.
I think we, I went through it with Mr. Tappin, seeing if he could on that, and he didn't find anything that we weren't able to. Yes?
I think I, if that's the case, I misunderstood your question.
Oh, okay.
Because I was looking at fire equipment on that question.
Oh, okay.
Because I can, I can buy three trucks for a hundred and eighty thousand compared to one, so.
All right, so maybe bring it down, originally we brought it down from ninety-four to seventy-eight, now bring it down to what, sixty, seventy?
So in twenty-twenty-nine, there's, replacing the Sterling dump truck, and it's listed at a hundred and eighty thousand for.
Yeah, we don't need any dump truck.
No.
We can have a nice, happy, used one.
So, this is, this is number eight?
This is number eight.
Number eight.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, this is number eight, oh, this is a different one, I'm sorry.
This is number eight.
Ninety-four confusing.
I apologize, no.
I think number seven's okay, but it's number, number eight.
Number eight, so going from sixty to what?
In previous years, we've done forty-five or fifty.
Okay.
Add it, I mean, forty-five thousand's a really good used pile truck.
Beautiful, so ten years of that, okay.
If you cut it to four, you probably could go a little bit more, to be honest, there's a fair amount of money in that trust fund, I think.
Okay, so bring that from sixty to forty-five? Do we agree?
You tell me what you want the number to be.
Because, you know, in terms of buying a used truck for forty-five or fifty versus buying a new one for a hundred and eighty, it's like three of them, you can buy three units.
And they don't last as long, so you will need to buy more.
The Western Star that we bought brand new for, is five years old now, it's only got eleven thousand miles on it, it's not, we plowed snow with them.
They're going to be here anyway.
We'll use them every once in a while in the summer for a project, but, you know, most of the time, we're doing other things.
Right.
We've got six trucks, and most of them don't turn a wheel until winter time comes.
You've got three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars in the highway equipment fund right now.
So then, in twenty-thirty-seven, there's a Western Star plow truck being replaced, again, it's listed at a hundred and eighty thousand in, actually, that's two thousand eighteen cost, so forty-five thousand in today's cost.
So how about if we put in the same thing we put in this year? How about if we put in forty thousand?
He's checking to make sure everybody needs to do that. Can you cut something?
So we're down to fifty-six thousand. And it looks like that's the only truck replacements.
So, is it telling you what, what we'd have to put in? You can come back to.
Fifty-six thousand, six hundred.
But that's not much savings.
You want me to tell you the answer, or the answer you want to hear?
I want the answer I want to hear. I wanted it to be smaller. All right, so.
It's fifty-six thousand, six hundred, next year is fifty-five, four, stays fifty-five, four.
If it was a hundred and eighty thousand, now it's forty-five or fifty, you'd have to come down more than four thousand a year, right?
Well, it depends on where the expenses.
It's all the other, it's the other machines on there, that, that's what I think it was, it was such a small amount.
Yeah, because there's a loader in there, loaders are not.
That we need to.
Yeah, loaders are expensive.
Yeah, you don't want to, I mean, because we're, we trade that one in with the transfer station, so we're not exactly getting rid of the current one.
You keep.
The highway department has, we're getting rid of the transfer station one and just recycling that one into there.
So let's change the sixty to fifty-five then.
All right. So what does that bring our warrant article?
Yes. You take a hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred dollars off your warrant article bottom one.
All right. So with the warrant article and with the budget as we have it, what does that leave us? I had it together, I can probably, you have math, too.
Well, you've got more warrant articles.
Oh, I know, I just wanted to know where we're at, and what we're doing next. I know it's written down. So we have 369. For warrant articles.
I'm not going to be direct.
All right.
We have paper for this.
All right, while he's looking, we know we have to put that amount for the Fire Ponds and Sisters, is that correct? We already took that down from a much higher number. We have to put 20,000 away for the contingency fund. So the only other thing left to talk about is the library, which has already come down from 100 to 30.
I want to remove it.
I don't agree.
Okay.
How about you, Mr. Brown? Need some money in there for the library?
Sure. Absolutely.
All right. So we just have to figure out what we're at and then we'll see if we've done all the work we have to do.
I'm looking, we have 582,500 for warrant articles.
582,500?
That's with a reduction on, just make sure that adds up.
Where does the 500 come from?
Because we've taken 16,500, we went from 94,500 to 78,000, that left me with 16,500, we were 500.
Oh, okay, I didn't have a 500, sorry.
And you are correct, because that was warrant article six, which was just 94.
Yep. So it's.
So it should be 582.
582,000, okay. And that's on.
Does not include the two warrant articles, the one you changed to unassigned fund balance and the 20,000 that was already awarded to come from unassigned fund balance.
Those are not in there anymore.
They're not in there anymore.
Correct. Because we used to be at six.
We were at 764,000 total coming in.
Okay. So if we took the 582 and we added that to the budget, which was 4,800 and.
4,882,000, 4,882,913.
I don't think, ever talk about numbers and these levels, so I'm not used to it. All right, then that gives us. I really didn't type it, so I don't pass it. Okay, there we go. So. You guys can go faster than me. So we're 5,464,913 if everything passes. And that means that we are what percentage with last year's warrant articles and budget? If we apples-to-apples this thing?
Well, the last year was 5.8 million.
So we just cut over a budget.
Yep, but your problem isn't until you get further on, because the revenue is what's going to kill you.
Because we made less money.
Yes, because you had 650,000 coming out to pay for our fire truck. And you're not having that issue.
Right, but we also got money in.
For what?
For ARPA funding and for other funding.
Well, that isn't included in any of this, unless it counts.
Well, I'm sure ARPA doesn't appreciate it.
I know, it didn't. 175.
All right, so. We spend less and I'm still in trouble?
You're still in trouble.
Yeah, you guys.
Because it's not the expense, the expense is killing you anyways, because you've added the expenses and you haven't gotten really anything, because there's 650,000 dollar fire trucks in there. And the thing is, it's killing you with the revenue side, because last year revenue to get to our tax rate was almost 2.5 million. Right now, we are at 1.7. So there's no way you're gonna.
But here's the thing.
Yep.
We can take that off when it's tech time with the extra money that we have in there if needed, so that if taxes were about to rise, then we could bring them back down, which is something that I know the school board is doing and I know we can do more of next year. So we are spending less money than last year. It's not our fault, but the revenue is different, and I think we should.
Right now, you're about 650,000 dollars more that you have to appropriate than last year.
Yeah, the warrant article total was off, it should actually be 448,000.
Even a little bit less.
And that excludes the 100,000 that's coming from, yeah, unassigned fund balance and the 20,000 that's coming from unassigned fund balance.
I think these numbers are the best, we're going to get them. Do you, I mean, what else do we need to do? I think we have the ability to fix it if we need to. We have enough money, we've been putting it aside, it's sitting there. We can use it if we need to. These are numbers that are reasonable to the.
But not 600,000 dollars. We've never put that much in there. We put a quarter of a million, that's about the most we've ever put in.
I understand that, but that doesn't mean that in this specific situation where we're having the issue, that we couldn't do that. And we have been told many, many times by our auditors that we have very healthy.
Well, just remember, we have three trail points.
Right.
Two payments.
Yep, which we did last year, one already is.
We said that we want to release 1.5 million dollars in there.
I appreciate that.
So we don't have very much to play with, so.
No. But I don't see where, I mean, we're literally cutting fireworks and people's, like ridiculous things at this point. And if we keep cutting like that, I just don't see how we can keep being healthy. And we just cut down a whole bunch of savings we're trying to do, so we have money for the future into really important funds. So I just don't see where the money's going to come from. How about you, Mr. Brown?
I'm sorry. What is the issue?
What else we need to do?
Huh?
What else we need to do? If you feel like we've cut what we can cut and we're where we need to be, or if you feel like we have to continue looking for things?
And Scott's position is?
I think it's too much, I think it's too much.
You think it's too much?
I think it's too much, and I think Kitchin is right. We are starting to nickel and dime, and that's not very productive, because we're looking for hundreds of thousands, not thousands of dollars. And I think it's still, unless you are interested in cutting services and people, you're where you need to be at this particular time.
And I think that unlike most years, we've had inflation that has gone up and there's been a lot of extra expenses. And I think that people will understand. I think everybody's asking for a higher amount increase this year than they have been in the past. I don't feel like I'm being unreasonable. I know that the school board is going to be asking for about the same percentage increase as us, and that's 10 times our budget.
I agree.
Thanks.
Can we go through the rest of the warrant articles?
Sure.
Unless somebody has anything, I don't have anything I want to change, because I don't know if anybody else has. Fire Ponds and Sisters, we kind of talked about it a little bit. The contingency of 20,000 coming out of the unassigned fund balance. Article number 12 was really the picture issue that was not right last year. It's basically saying that the Board of Selectmen, or Select Board is the agent to expend, not really the two-thirds vote. So we'll see if that happens. Like 13 is the yellow exemption that the Board was in favor of, is increasing those exemptions by 25%. And article number 14 is the creation of a capital improvements plan. So removing the responsibility from the planning board and giving it to a committee.
I think we'll go out these details better, well, better numbers. And in article nine, able to change from the Select Board does not recommend this article, to the Select Board does recommend this article.
If the Select Board wants for that, yes.
Well, we just, didn't we just vote for that?
You voted for the money.
The two of us.
You and Kerry both, you want to leave that?
Yes, so it's voted in.
So we take out this one?
Correct.
Well, can we go through each one of them?
Sure.
Because I'm going to do the next one.
Shocking.
Hey, you vote the way you feel, I, you can vote the way you want.
There you go.
Just going through the complete marks, starting with two.
Correct.
Two fine. Three, you need to give us the number.
Yep.
21.
Well.
Are we done with the budget?
We need to.
The number we have presently for the operating budget is 4,882,913.
So do you want a motion for every single one of these? How do you want to do it?
That would certainly make it easier on our part.
All right.
So number one, we haven't needed anything? Right? Number two, do we need something for this one?
No.
Thank you. Number three.
That would be good to have a motion on.
Okay. Am I the one with the best speaking?
You go for it, I'll do another one.
Shall the town openly raise and appropriate as an operating budget and non-included appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations, voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by the vote of the first session for the purposes set forth with their end totaling 4,882,913. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be 4,574,348, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous action on the Select Board or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40:13, number 10, and number 16, to take up the issue of revised operating budget only. The Select Board recommends this article, majority vote required. Do I have a second?
Second. Go ahead.
Any discussion? No. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Article number four, to see if the vote, the town will raise, geez, start again. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 175,000 to be deposited into the fire equipment capital reserve fund. The Select Board recommends this article, majority vote required. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Article number five, uh-oh.
Stricken.
No, not stricken, no.
Oh, yeah, you're right. No, I apologize.
I don't have the specific language to take it out of the.
To, I would just add to the end of the article, right before, the Select Board recommends this article to come from unassigned fund balance, no tax impact anticipated.
Gosh.
Do you need to?
To see. To see, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 100,000 dollars to deposit in the town building's capital reserve fund.
The Select Board.
Can you go fill in the rest?
To come from unassigned fund balance, no amount to be raised from general taxation.
The Select Board recommends this article, majority vote required. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Article number six, do you want to do something?
Sure.
You can do six, how about that?
All right, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 78,000 to be deposited into the transfer station equipment capital reserve fund. The Select Board recommends this article, majority vote required. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Want to do some more?
What are we on, six, seven?
Seven.
Okay, what do we turn that to? All right, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 90,000 dollars to be deposited into the Highway Department Road and Bridge Improvement Plan Capital Reserve Fund. The Select Board recommends this article, majority vote required.
Select, do you need a second? Second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye, yes.
Beautiful.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Do you want me to do that?
It's up to you.
What do we make the 55? Okay. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 60,000 dollars to be deposited into the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund.
You actually knew that.
I apologize, yeah. I actually knew that going in and then it didn't happen. So to the sum of 55,000 dollars to be deposited into the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. The Select Board recommends this article, majority vote required. Do I have a second? Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. You're ready, aye? Okay. You could do one, my brain is fried.
All right, article number nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 30,000 dollars to deposit in the library, lead library building capital reserve fund. The Select Board recommends this article, majority vote required. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All those opposed, aye. Two yes, one no. Motion passes. Article number 10, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 20,000 dollars to deposit into Fire Ponds, Fire Ponds and Sisters Capital Reserve Fund. The Select Board recommends this article, majority vote required. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? No. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Want me to do this one?
Sure, that's a long one.
Article 11, to see if the town will vote to establish contingency fund for fiscal year 2023 for unanticipated expenses that may arise and further to raise and appropriate 20,000 dollars to go into the fund. The sum to come from the unassigned fund balance and no amount to be raised from general taxation. Any appropriation left in the fund at the end of the year will lapse to the general fund. The governing body shall annually publish a detailed report of all expenditures from the fund. The Select Board recommends this article, majority vote required. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. You want to do one?
Article number 12, to see if the town will vote to change the purpose of existing Fire Pond and Sister and Capital Reserve Fund to allow for the installation of new Fire Ponds and Sisters and to allow for repair and replacement of existing Fire Ponds and Sisters and to name the Select Board as agents to expend, two-thirds vote required.
Second.
Any discussion? No. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. I voted yes. Number 13, shall the town modify revisions of RSA 72:39-A for elderly exemption from property tax in the town and league, based on assessed value for qualified taxpayers, to be as follows. For a person 65 years, 65 years of age, up to 74 years, 217,500. For a person 75 years of age, up to 79 years, 262,500. For a person 80 years of age and above, 337,500, majority vote required. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? Nope. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye, aye.
No, you say nay.
Nay.
So, two votes for, one against. Motion passes. Do you want the last one or do you want me?
Um, I can do it, but I'm terrible with these arcing things.
Okay.
Did we have something?
Can I speak?
Yeah.
John, um, so before you read this, um, in case my reputation is waning, I'd like to point out that there's no such thing as a capital improvement plan in the RSA's. RSA 674, uh, colon five through colon eight are about the capital improvements program. CIP is capital improvements program.
Let me read it.
Also, the word plan did not appear in the, uh, part in the legislation that created it initially.
Thank you.
So, I'm seeing implement a capital improvements program committee.
Yes, that, that's correct.
So, it's the word above.
One above it, yeah.
So, capital improvement?
Program.
Program.
That's, that's the correct CIP.
It's hard to see underneath the red.
That was an editorial change. I made over the objection of the assistant town administrator.
Look at your study section. Wow.
All right. Article number fourteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board as provided in RSA 7674:5. What the heck is that? One? One. Geez. One, to remove the planning board's responsibility for the town's capital improvement program, and two, to establish, appoint, and implement a capital improvement program committee, whose purpose shall be to prepare and amend a recommended program of municipal capital improvement expenditures projected over a period of at least six years to assist the select, assist the select board and the advisory budget committee in completion of the annual budget. Membership of such committee shall include at least one member of the planning board and may include but not be limited to other members of the planning board, the advisory budget committee, the select board, town employees, and residents of the town of Lee. Majority vote required. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion passes. I don't understand why you didn't want to do that one.
Yes, yeah, I was, I was thinking ahead.
You were smart.
Yeah. I have a hard one. Does that end the hearing portion of the program?
Okay. We'll move on?
Oh, yeah, we never opened it properly. Should we open it properly?
Well, you continue, you continue.
Oh, we need to. We do need to close it properly.
You should close it though.
Well, does anybody have anything to say?
Chris Regan. Okay. Uh, Chris Regan from High School, Earl Drive. Um, I, I'm new. I've been here about a year and I was just wondering if you could all explain how the deliberative session works. Um, it's much different. This whole system is much different than what I'm used to from Massachusetts. I don't, um, I just want to know how that works. Great question. Thank you.
I can. Andy can explain it.
Sure. I'd be happy to start anyway. Um, and just to start, the deliberative session is scheduled for February 5th, um, at the Public Safety, uh, not, the Massachusetts Elementary School at nine o'clock in the morning. Um, and typically how the deliberative session works, if you're familiar with traditional town meeting, it operates in sort of similar fashion, except that you read each warrant article. The moderator will ask if there are any amendments to that warrant article. Um, and you can have discussion about the warrant article, ask questions about it, particularly the operating budget warrant article. Then the, those assembled there at the deliberative session will vote to place the warrant article on the warrant. Um, and no actual vote is taken beyond placing that warrant article on the warrant. Uh, you don't actually approve it. You can approve amendments to it at the deliberative session. But, and when the deliberative session ends and you've got your articles all added to the warrant, that becomes your official warrant and that's what goes on the paper ballot for the follow-up elections, which will be Tuesday, March 8th, um, downstairs at the Public Safety Service Complex from seven to seven.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, do the people, um, offer amendments or do you? I gotta back up. Sorry. That way it's recorded for people to hear. Yeah, sorry. So I'm used to open town meetings. So, um, do the people, the townspeople offer an amendment and the group, and, and how would that get approved?
The townspeople can offer amendments, although they can't change the true purpose of the actual warrant article and that comes down in large part to the moderator deciding what, whether the actual purpose of the warrant article is being changed. They can, um, increase or decrease dollar amounts and, and they can, uh, change wording as necessary, as long as it doesn't change the purpose. Once that amendment has been, has been proposed, the group would vote on whether to approve the amendment or not, and then the group would vote again as to whether to place the actual warrant article on the warrant.
Okay. So it is the people that are attending that actually do both of those things?
Yeah. It'll be, it'll be a small number of people.
And actually, they would vote to place it on.
How many people usually attend?
Well, it depends.
How many?
Sixty-six. And that includes all poll workers.
Yeah, all the poll workers.
It depends on also what's on the, within the warrant articles, how many people shop to, how, how.
If it's controversial or not.
Yeah.
And just to give you an example, like if there's a warrant article by like a dump truck, uh, the people can decide, you know, we're gonna put this amount of money or this amount of money. They can't decide, oh, no, we don't want to buy dump truck, we want to buy a backup. They can't do that. So it's the intent of the warrant article has to be preserved. And the thing is, you can say, if you don't want to spend something on, like for instance, if you want to buy a pickup truck or something for $40,000, the group can say, well, we want to buy that for zero dollars, which is basically kills it. Basically kills it. So, there's, there's, there's things that the particular groups can do if they don't want to deal with some particular issue or not. We don't usually do that, but, um, and plan on maybe getting out of there about noon, maybe a little bit earlier, so just...
Starts at nine?
Starts at nine.
Okay. I have one more question. I went to the school board presentation the other night and one of the things, if I'm understanding you correctly, in the presentation it said that it had all, like the projected tax increases impact on each of the three towns and they had asterisks, next to lead and Madori, saying they don't have the information yet for the rates. Is that something they'll get before they present us?
Yeah, they, they should have them now.
They didn't because they did it before it was, they did it before they even had their own school board meeting.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so they have it.
They'll have that. And they're coming on the 24th.
And we'll see that figure obviously.
February.
Oh, you mean Dr. Morris?
Yeah.
He's coming on the 24th.
Our, our evaluation jumped up significantly. It was a little under, um, half a billion dollars. Now it's 713, um, 713 million. So, uh, excuse me. Yes, million.
And we don't know what the other towns, how we, how that affects us. They don't know a few values till the same year, right?
No.
Right? So.
So, during the...
Maybe staying the same.
If they don't have Madori, it's most likely Madori did a reevaluation too.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, it's probably a little bit misleading. You don't actually have to vote on the warrant article if there's no amendment proposed to it. If there's no discussion, the moderator will just move to, uh, place the warrant article on the warrant without a vote of the group. Right. If there's no amendment proposed, that's what it is.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thanks. Those are your questions.
Anything I have questions during deliberative session, just get up and ask.
I think, okay, we're glad you joined our town.
Thank you.
All right. Do I have to close?
If there's something to be said.
Yeah. Sharon should make a motion to close the public hearing if there's no one else.
If you just close it.
We're gonna, we're just, we're gonna move on to the...
Andy Robertson, Town Administrator.
You're gonna close the public hearing first.
What?
Just gonna announce that the public hearing is closed.
Oh, okay.
The public hearing is closed. We'll move on to item three. Andy Robertson, Town Administrator.
Yeah, I had a couple of quick things. Um, let me take these a little bit out of order. Uh, the first is the library furnace. Mr. Bullock, uh, gave me a bill for $2,290 for estimated repair of one of the library furnaces. Um, not sure where you wanted to take that money from. I did do a little digging and there is a little over $8,000 in the contingency fund. Um, but surely recognize Steve to speak to this further?
Yeah.
So, this is the newest furnace in the old schoolhouse section. Um, it's got a plugged heat exchanger, so every couple of months or so, we have to go down there and try to suck as much water out as we can or it stops working. When it doesn't work, it only runs for an hour or two and then stops, so we have to constantly go there. One weekend, I think we're there eight or nine times to keep it running. So, we were able to get the part covered under warranty, so that was about a thousand dollars, but to put the part in, you essentially have to uninstall the furnace, take it entirely apart, put everything back together, then reinstall the furnace.
Great.
So, it's, the labor is not covered under warranty. So essentially, all this is labor. And it'll probably go, this probably won't be as much, 'cause one of my guys will probably help him do it, try to cut some time, 'cause they want to try to do it in a day. That's an awful lot of work to do in a day by yourself. So, I, everything's been breaking the past couple of months, so I don't have that kind of money in the maintenance renovation budget right now, so it's open to take it. Well, I originally want to take it out of the maintenance library fund, but there's not really a maintenance library fund. That was...
And the problem we haven't...
That's non-existent.
We haven't defined what is the responsibility of the library and what is the responsibility of the town. And that is something that I think we should really do in detail at some point, because that helps everyone understand what, you know, when I say it's inside the walls or outside the walls, what does that mean? So I think that would be something we should do at a further point, but right now, that's definitely inside the building. Right.
I, I'd like to take 22, or be approved for up to $2,290 on the contingency fund to pay for the, for care.
I'd like to change that. I would like to see if we can take it out of the ARPA funds. We've still got significant money in there. So, I would propose that, if, if you allow, um, I move to authorize withdrawal of the amount not to exceed $2,290 from the, um, ARPA fund in order to pay Thermo Dynamics Incorporated to repair the furnace in the main public library.
Second?
Any discussion?
Good.
No? All those in favor?
I'll say.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Okay.
The other, um, item I had was, uh, there was some discussion of, of what hours DPW staff worked, whether there were summer hours involved or not on the, uh, hourly overtime and shift differential policy, uh, that I presented at our last meeting. My understanding, uh, from Mr. Bullock is that there is not likely to be summer hours. Um, that said, I left the definition of 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM as a defined day, just to give some definition. Um, noted that the public works director could change normal workday description with two weeks' notice. This was part of Durham's policy that I had copied. And also, uh, in the first part of, um, actually in the second part of the overtime shift differential policy, number two, I changed the definition there from seven to three until their normally scheduled hours, uh, which would give some leeway if the definition changed. And I did the same policy essentially for non-DPW employees. Uh, they're hourly in the event that the board wanted to, uh, change all hourly employees the same. I will say, I've talked to three hourly employees that are not DPW, uh, personnel. Two of them were not in favor of, uh, changing the overtime policy. One of them was.
So, the other thing we talked about is this does not cover the fire department and police department?
And they reflect that.
And, but the policy does not say that.
It needs to reflect that.
Okay. I'm, for the hourly employee, I can, I can specify that...
Transfer station and highway department?
No, no, no.
There, no, this is on the other, um, the DPW one should be fine because it's specific to DPW, but the other hourly employment agreement needs to specify whether it applies to, uh, fire police or not.
Right.
Pleasure the board get it on.
Unless we don't change it because you just said that you don't, but...
Depends on which one you choose.
Right. Exactly. So we need to choose and then get aside the wording.
You always change the wording.
So, how about if we wait till he changes this so we can read it and then just approve the public works one?
Yeah. Why don't we just approve the public works one, see how that goes and then if there's a call for it with other, if there's a call for it with other people, then we can change that down there.
Sure.
That would give it traction. Does that make sense?
I'm gonna give this to Carrie.
I know who the one person was.
Can I?
I'm going to...
Oh, sorry. Don't run away. Don't run away.
Good work, guys.
And it's just, maybe this is really, I just want to be clear, this is really a question to Andy, but I think you can answer it, because the motion you put in here is to move, to move to approve the overtime policy with regards to the highway department personnel presented. I think what you want this for is all public works.
Department of Public Works.
Isn't it?
Yeah. I didn't, Andy did the slip for me.
Well, I did it.
Or she did it.
I didn't think transfer station was in there.
So, if public works, if chip works 10-hour day and the person calls in sick, he's gonna be forced to work 12.
He works 12.
Because I don't have help right now, but I get enough more help in there, he'll be working 10s again.
Okay. My, uh, yeah, my thought was that you did...
Because I've been directed by the board not to let him work over 10 hours a day. And I don't have enough help.
Okay. My, uh, understanding which one is Steve was that you, you wanted this specific to... What I've written is Department of Public Works.
Yeah, and that. Works.
That covers everybody.
That covers the Department of Public Works. So it works.
It actually does cover the transfer station. This is...
It's all of them, right?
Yeah. Right.
No, I, I get that, but the motion doesn't say that.
Right.
Yeah.
I wrote the motion because I didn't know what was going to...
Do you want me to read? I can read the actual policy?
He can just change it.
Yeah. Just change it to public works with other transfer.
Want it to be clear what we're moving on, not just for highway department.
Policy is specific to Department of Public Works.
Yes. And the paper.
No, I understand that. I saw that, but that's not what this says. So, you good?
I'm good.
So, you've got the motion?
Yep. Do you want me to read it or...
Yeah.
Sure.
So, I move to approve the overtime policy regards to the public works department personnel as presented?
My second motion?
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye. And that's retroactive from December 27th.
Aye. So, motion passes. Three, three in favor of it. And if you could, Andy, just for the one for the other people, can you just tweak it so we take a look at it and then if we choose to do it, we'll at least have it?
I will and I will make sure that any summer hours employees are exist.
Okay. Yeah, and if people wanted to let us know why they were or were not in favor, that would be helpful to understand.
Can you include in the motion when it's effective?
Uh, yeah, so effective, December 27th, that's what it says here.
It said to move as presented, and as presented it was effective the 27th. That's how it was presented.
I, I did that.
I can speak. I was, wasn't in favor.
Please.
So, as an example, last week I had a meeting Monday night, Wednesday night, Thursday night. And in the theory of budget cutting, I would have had overtime for those three nights, even if I took Tuesday or Friday off. And I'm not the, the thinking that you'd work 40 hours and then you'd overtime.
So, I thought that it said in here, if, if it was not during scheduled time. So, do you always have those meetings or no?
I do. But how that was explained to me
Okay.
was that you work an eight-hour day and then anything over an eight-hour day is overtime at 8. And I'm, I mean, as a resident, I mean, you don't work in a town and get rich. There's gotta be some, give and some take and, you know what I mean?
That's why Katrina and Carrie and I are on the board, to get rich.
Yeah, that's...
It hasn't worked out yet.
It's going very slowly, by the way.
And then, sure, you get comp time, which is great, but you only have, so, after those three meetings, I have, you know, our RSA's have governed how long I have to get everything done for. It's not this meeting, but Mondays, Wednesdays and Thursdays. So, you don't end up, I mean, you could, it's great to accumulate comp time. You have to take it and it's cost, it does, it costs the town money for people to be out and, you know. That's why I was one of the two that weren't in favor of it.
Thank you. I appreciate letting us know that.
So, how many, Andy?
I asked that question.
How many, so if we...
Excuse me, but I have to say, I mean, in support of public, it's getting different getting called up to plug snow at 2:00 in the morning. Absolutely agree.
I, I agree. Thank you. And that's something that's not, something you planned for that's not, it's...
Yep.
Exactly.
So, Andy, if you take out the fire people, the police people and the public works people, how many people are we actually talking about this other policy affecting?
Uh, we're talking about three people.
Three people. And two of whom said?
No.
No.
So, I feel you respect that.
So, okay.
Mood point until somebody brings it up again?
Wait, I just presented it because I know that you...
You feel, you're very...
I said we don't want to do it. I'd reduce the progress step, I mean.
So, scratch that, tweaking the thing.
Great.
Save ourselves some work.
Don't tweak.
No tweaking is allowed.
All right. What else we got?
That is all I have.
All right. It's not even midnight yet.
I was expecting the budget process to go on for a piece of that.
I know. Look at the teamwork that happened here.
Do you want to finish on evaluation?
Oh, and we could do a, like a quick kind of public meeting?
I don't know.
Should we do that? A quick discussion about evaluations or do you want to?
The only thing I would say is that we did not put a non-polic on the agenda button. Because that's up to the board.
I can send drafts. I just haven't been working on budgets, so I haven't.
Okay, well, budgets are done, so...
I can now send a draft. I just can't discuss it until it's done.
So, are we telling the department heads that they are not coming on the 24th, correct?
Correct.
That's kind of what it looked like.
I think, right? I mean, but we have to, but when's the date we have to have it done, right? We just haven't, it's...
If you were to make any, uh, merit increases or possible living adjustments, you would need to do it today.
Hey, it would already, the budgets already closed.[1695.71]